Let's call the meeting to order. It's rise for the political agents. President, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Any additions, additions, corrections to proposed agenda for this evening? Roll call.
President Schneider?
Present.
President Protem Dyke, Councilmember Alec?
Present.
Councilmember Calca?
Present.
Councilmember Feldman? Councilmember Glasser?
Present.
Next to our agenda is communications. Presentation from GLWA. And it's confusing as heck to me, so our clerk treasurer has volunteered to explain.
Well, it is a savings of only $900. That was our contribution for the Highland Park debt. It was originally slated that we would have $13,100 as our flat rate monthly fee and $1081 per MCF. And it went down to $13,000 flat rate fee, but they increased our volume charge to $1084. I did a quick calculation based on last, the last 12 months, and it decreases our increase from 3.17% to 2.86%. So there is a minor savings.
A minor obvious.
True, yeah. Okay, and we're going to be addressing GLWA further. Out of the line, that's it for communications. And moving on to consent agenda, the minutes for... First, the public hearing of June 7, 2022, to address, it's a public hearing to address fiscal year 2022, 2023 water sewer and SSO rates. Anybody have any issues? Questions, comments, corrections for the proposed minutes of that meeting? The none. Next, we have the budget and truth in taxation hearing. Again, for public comment for the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022 hyphen 2023. Any comments, corrections to the minutes for that meeting? Next, we have the minutes for June 7, 2022, regular meeting of the village council. Anybody with regard to that? I did have, I did notice one little typo. I don't know what happened to it. I thought I saw something where Wayne's last name was Glasses. But, oh gosh, there it is. Sorry, yeah, the top of page 15. Yeah, second to last paragraph. Councilmember Feldman moved, councilmember Glasses.
Glasses.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And he's not wearing glasses, so you can't do that.
Everybody does that.
It was somewhere here, okay. That's it for council for the minutes of our last meeting. General fund. Streets, local streets, parks and recreation fund, downtown development authority fund, wastewater treatment plant improvement project debt, sewer fund, water fund, equipment fund. Water and sewer systems. Payroll register report. Water report. Water usage actually down. W monthly report. Wastewater treatment plant monthly report. It's a very interesting report to read, considering the torrential rain we had. And managed to handle it. Police report. OEO report. Construction code authority, aka building permit report, and financial position report. Maintain a motion. Motion by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Consent agenda is unanimously approved. Now is the time and hour agenda for public comment relating to any agenda items. Public comment this evening? Regular agenda, liability insurance proposal. Dustin? You're up.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me back. So I'm just going to cover the basic highlights. And then if you guys have any questions, please let me know. So our renewal quote is higher, obviously, than last year. There are five primary reasons. One, we took on two new vehicles. When those vehicles came onboard, we basically, we didn't charge you guys. As we get new vehicles on, depending on when they get put on, vehicle, things like that, we sometimes choose to charge, sometimes we don't. A lot of times, we don't. It's just something that we choose to do. So we're taking on the full insurance and liability and conflict collision coverage of two new police vehicles. As you remember, you took cyber midterm, roughly right about six months on the dot. So again, you are seeing the weight of that full cyber policy. Second of all, we did apply building increases. So overall, the buildings received $180,000 of extra blanket coverage. $180,000, I'm sorry. Now, I will say this, and I'm just going to be very upfront with you. That is not going to save the world in what we're dealing with right now. You know, building material, gas, rubber, metal, it's a nightmare. So we're just trying to even that call without being ridiculous. And then finally, the last of the increase comes off of just basic rate, you know, and keeping up with inflation. It's unfortunate, you know, we do have to operate as well. Most insurance companies were decimated last year by claims. Claims didn't increase, the number didn't increase, the dollar amount quadrupled. It was just absolutely insane. This economy is very interesting to deal with. We're trying our best. I will say, barring, you know, like I said, adding the vehicles and cyber, you know, we would have been right around, you know, about 6%. So we wouldn't have been, we would have been below what the averages have been about eight. So I know that doesn't sound great. I'm honestly proud because it is difficult right now.
Aye?
Yes, right around, so...
I got new vehicles, cyber, building increase, and inflation.
Right, so last year, last year we renewed you, so you renewed right at $55,000, okay? We're proposing this year $60,654, so...
Five reasons.
Yeah, so two new vehicles, cyber, building, building increase?
Okay, but the vehicles is one, okay.
Yeah, I'm so, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so my point of five, there's vehicles count as two. I'm sorry, I did lump those in. Yes. So, and again, yeah, and then that last being just the fact that it's, you know, we've got to take a little rate, we've got to keep up with inflation, and we're trying our best. Again, I will always be aggressively, you know, working on your guys' behavior. I don't work for part plan. I don't work for the carrier, I work for you. So I'm always trying to do my best. I was telling David just the other, you know, this is our fifth year renewing with you guys. We've managed to stay pretty tight. If you look over these last five years, you know, I think that we've done a good job controlling what we've been, you know, putting together every year with you guys. And like I said, I'm happy. I know that it seems substantial, but like I said, you know, improvement comes with unfortunate cost. That's while she's looking that up. The other thing I just want to kind of bring to your guys' attention. The administrative staff here at the village has been doing a great job communicating with me with village people that have been experiencing issues. We've been reaching out to them as fast as possible, communicating, working with them, doing everything we can to quote unquote, you know, kind of explain the situation. You guys are not always responsible for problems. You are just susceptible to a problem as a homeowner. So I always want you guys to know that, you know, when something bad is happening in this village, it is not immediately your fault. I've had to educate a handful of people in the community that you yourselves don't know. I know DPW works very hard to get, be responsive, do as much as they can to minimize the damage without, you know, putting our necks out there. So we've been working very hard indiligently as a cooperative to stay ahead of, you know, some of the problems that have arisen due to the waters and things like that taking place. As you guys know, Almont has always been tumultuous for it. It's just how it is, so.
About an 8% increase.
It's original inflation, 8.6.
That's what I was going to say, not too bad. Yeah. Being at 8%. And we added to that 8%, so, I mean, it wasn't like it was a full 8% jump, just on what we had.
Way it is.
And I do have to say, Dustin is very responsive. Every time we have an issue, he's right there, available, so.
You covered that other past history.
There's no contest.
Done. I think as a collective, you know, the village is just as responsible for, I don't want to call them successes. I just want to call them explaining the situations, stating our piece, and unfortunately having to move on. But I think that, you know, everybody does a really hard job here to try and communicate because, you know, a lot of people just don't understand how insurance works. You know, I insure a lot of homeowners, and I tell them all the time, I'm like, "You can be angry at a municipality all the time, I do understand that side, but they're not responsible for whatever your problem is because I know your plumber's going to tell me it's in your line." So we try our best, so.
Unfortunate.
I only understand the insurance side of it, I try to ignore the rest.
Yeah, I'm... Stick your neck out there, somebody cuts it off. Anybody have any questions of Dustin?
Sorry.
Support that.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Calca, to approve the decoration agency coverage submitted to us this evening. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rejection? Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you for your time. If it's okay, could I excuse myself?
Sure.
Stay for the memo.
Thank you so much.
Not a lot, it's been done before. I overplied. You should have four points. Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah. Thanks, Dustin. Enjoy the nice weather outside. Okay, regular agenda item number two, North River Truck and Trailer invoice approval. So who's making that presentation?
Mr. President, DPW Supervisor Treat has provided a memo giving a little bit of background on the issue of the Vector truck and repairs. There was additional work that was needed to be done. That's reflected in a separate invoice for your folks' approval. You folks had originally approved a ballpark estimate for the repair of the Vector truck. Other items were found to be in need of repair as well. And so the grand total for those items are $32,272.64 for the one invoice, and then the second invoice is for $6,780.1. And we do have the truck, and it has been used since it's been back in the stable, so.
Good working order, presume. Okay, commentary from council? We have addressed the issue previously, a little further development, final price. Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, approving the debris body repair and the amount stated on the record. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved, I should say, by those council members in attendance.
Support that.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Calca to approve the second invoice being presented to us for the additional repairs in the amount of $6,780.1. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objection? Unanimously approved by council members in attendance. Okay, moving on to regular agenda item number three, amendment number three to GLWA water service contract. Who's making that presentation to us?
Mr. President, the council has indicated in my memo, over the last three months, we've had periodic discussions with representatives from GLWA. There was an interesting first rodeo for me dealing with GLWA for a contract negotiations. And they were very insistent on us making some improvements to our redundancy because of power outages that we identified in the past as being the cause of exceeding the hourly rates that are limited by contract. And fortunately, with your folks' approval, we were able to implement a SCADA upgrade during the month of May that went smoothly. Final programming changes were made by the end of the month. We've supplied some background emails that went back and forth between GLWA and ourselves to substantiate that dialogue that we had, and that met with their approval. And with that, even though they were holding a hammer over our head for a period of time, they acquiesced and agreed to basically no major increases in our rates because of past exceedances based on the quality improvements that have been implemented and the fact that we've documented that those things aren't working properly. So with that, they've supplied this number three amendment that is basically an update to previous amendments that you folks have seen periodically every three to four years in the past.
Headline with July 5 to approve the amendment.
It was an extension to go through the process because it has to go to their board of directors as well. And so pending your folks' approval, Mr. President, if we can get your John Hancock in the next couple of days, that would be helpful for us to submit that to GLWA.
Okay. This evening, it's ready. So I've reviewed proposed amendment number three, which appears acceptable to me considering all of the circumstances. Looks like we came out with a pretty good result considering that this could have gone south. Anybody else in council have comments, questions, discussion?
Says some additional background information regarding our discussion with our fire department chief is that they've actually been coordinating some of these major training exercises with other communities and doing that in other places. So that's helped avoid the problem that we experienced back in 2019.
June, July, August? Seen some of their training sessions. Where I love, there's a very large field, and I've seen them out there with real fire hose of something. Yeah, interesting. Use a lot of water, but necessary training. Okay, so we're, I'm not hearing much of anything from councils as far as any in-depth or discussion at all. So do we have a motion? Oh, yeah, do we have a motion? This is a resolution, isn't it?
To approve amendment number three, water service contract between Great Lakes Water Authority and the Village of Almont.
Motion made by Councilmember Calca, supported by Councilmember Glasser, approving amendment number three to GLWA water service contract. Just regular vote, hmm? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Objection? Unanimously approved by those council members in attendance. Regular agenda item number four, ratification of I U O E, tentative agreement. Is this still tentative? As I understand it, the union did approve...
That's why we met in closed session to review the highlights of what had been negotiated. You folks brought two items to our attention. We revisited the union representatives to discuss those two issues, and they agreed to our request to clarify the paid lunch that had a specific 30-minute time limit, as well as modifying the probationary period where it's a straight six months for new employees.
Thing that catches my eye is, is there a reason that we're using the word tentative?
It was tentative pending your folks' ratification of their agreeing to those two changes.
So if we vote on it now, it will no longer be tentative, be final.
Okay.
All right. Since the union did make the modifications as indicated by council, sounds like we're ready for a motion.
From 7:00 to 3:30, so their hours will change from 7:00 to 3:00.
Okay, so they're just taking off a half hour, so they're...
Yeah.
And how's that affect overtime?
It doesn't. Because if they're, if they're called on their lunch, it's a paid lunch, so they're, they're available for their lunch break, so.
So right now, they work 7:00 to 3:30, and a half hour of that day is unpaid.
Correct.
So now they'll work 7:00 to 3:00, and within that timeframe, they'll take a half hour of lunch.
Which they will be available if the need arises.
Did somebody make a motion on this? I don't think so.
I was going to, but I didn't know if I needed to include the word tentative.
Uh, no, I, well, the, this would be like final ratification?
Yeah. Counsel, maybe the verbiage and the...
What'd you say? Is there another word that needs to be in place of it, though?
Just eliminate it.
Just to put the agreement between...
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025, with the I U O E 324 pending ratification by the union.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Calca, supported by Councilmember Alec, to approve the I U O E contract as stated on the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved by those council members in attendance. Regular agenda item number five, fourth quarter budget amendments. Kim?
Included in your packet is the detail in the proposed budget amendments. In summary, general fund, we end up at the end of the year with an increase in fund balance of $52,759, due in part to the increase in the state revenue sharing due to the census adjustment, the cell tower contract, and the slight increase in real property taxes. In the major street fund, we are increasing our fund balance by $42,560. Again, that was due to an increase in the Act 51 funds. They distributed the undistributed motor vehicle among the municipalities, so that increased as well. In local streets, we did decrease our fund balance by $18,850, though we had an increase in the Act 51. We did have some road repairs that needed to be done. And it also includes the McIntosh project, which might be pushed back to fiscal year 2023. More than likely, they're not going to get it done in a week. So the park fund, their fund balance decreased by $14,861, due in part to the new playground equipment being installed. The 285 fund, which is our ARPA fund that increased by the amount of our first tranche of $147,085. Our DWRF debt fund increased by $26,640 due to the part of the Local Community Stabilization Act being moved from general fund to the 498 fund. What that is, is a personal property tax reimbursement that the state gives us. And part of the calculation is because of the debt fund. So council decided to move it to the debt instead of general fund. Sewer, we decreased our fund balance by $169,024, a lot due to the SCADA upgrade that got postponed from fiscal year '21 to '22. And then our increases in our utilities and our emergency repairs due to the flooding and salt, that event. The water fund decreased by $160,767 because we finalized out the Hamilton Water Main Project, the Kalin Water Main relocation and easement purchase, and the SCADA upgrade. And the equipment fund decreased in fund balance by $25,430 due to the Vector truck repair and the purchase of the speed trailers, which was partially reimbursed by the township.
Questions, commentary from council?
The only question I had is, the sewer line has always been the red light, I guess you'd say. And with decreases in bulk of exceeding $160, is that a concern going into next year with power funding at the minute?
I believe it was anticipated with our 10-year step increase. We're gonna lose a little bit in the first few years until we start building up that rate.
Questions, commentary? If not, entertain a motion to approve the fourth quarter budget amendments for the fiscal year 2022.
I'll make the motion to approve the fourth quarter budget amendments.
Question made by Councilmember Alec, supported by President Protem Dyke, approving the fourth quarter budget amendments. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Objections? Unanimously approved by council members in attendance. It's time for public comment for non-agenda items. No public comment regarding non-agenda? No, there isn't. Okay, Mr. Trent, anything to bring to council?
Just to let you know that I'm scheduled to meet with Mr. Novak tomorrow. We'll be taking care of the easement documents and giving him a check for $10,000. And then we'll be heading off to the county either later that day or on Thursday to get the document recorded. And I get a personal tour of his latest addition to the Bell's facility that I was unable to attend last Friday because of this, so.
He finally completed the assisted living section, which is the third section of that development, so.
Also be meeting with the DDA Board tomorrow evening, addressing some issues related to our involvement with them regarding the snowplow services that they're going to be discussing tomorrow night. We've supplied some numbers for their consideration, and we think the practical thing for the DDA Board to do is to utilize the DPW to save them money next year. So we've supplied an all or nothing proposal that covers the removal of snow from the parking lots, the sidewalks, as well as taking care of the banners for next year. And I'll be meeting with the Parks Board Thursday evening to discuss future grant opportunities that they're interested in pursuing for the tennis court repurposing project, as well as getting feedback from both entities regarding the community heart and soul that they were in attendance with at last month.
Action from Park Board to the suggestion that the Park Board have administration of all of our village parks.
Item that's on their agenda for Thursday. I haven't heard any other feedback at this point, and I would yield to Councilmember Glasser in case he's heard something on that.
Kind of what I heard, yep, too, that that was on their agenda.
Yeah.
Sir? Thank you. Hope everything's fine. You right-handed or left-handed?
Right-handed, this might be an issue later in the year, we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, can only imagine. Kim, anything to bring to council?
Just letting you know I will not be in attendance at the next meeting, so Ms. Capron is going to fill in for me. And also, audit with K M King is scheduled for August 15th through the 17th. That's it.
The Boy Scout Troop 128 held a flag retirement ceremony, which included five or six flags that the village provided for retirement at the park on Saturday morning. And there was lots of activity in the park, so that's really good to see. Third, I think it was last fall, dude came in here and accused DPW, the dude down on West St. Clair General Squire Road came down here accusing DPW of not responding and all that sort of stuff. And then it was his problem and we billed him. Have we got the payment on that yet? We need to push that and make sure that that gets done. Because that was our time and resources, and he said he would cover fees if it ended up being his issue, and it was his issue, so. That one's not gonna fall, that's not gonna fall off the radar. That's all I got.
So I won't be here for the first meeting. I'll be in Florida. And then speaking of the speed trailers, the only comment I had is like the one down at the bottom of the hill there by Kidder Road. I'm not a law officer, but I believe that sign should be moved up about two blocks further into town. You're still a quarter mile away from that 25 zone, and it's throwing the red and blue light saying your speed. I mean, I just, I think it should be in the 25 zone, not at the 25 zone. That way, they get their chance to stop, and then, I mean, and I get it, it's a big hill. I mean, it's a little harder to set up, they're just getting used to it. I mean, but it's a good thing. They're slamming on the brakes at Elizabeth Lane, so.
A lot of complaints up in that Kidder Four corner stop sign area for years about the speeding movement there, so that one in Kidder was a really good placement.
Does that, do those record, like, how many speeding incidents are on it? By time and stuff, so they know when to patrol afterwards?
Exactly, once they get some hard data, see the trends, and when the more problematic hours of the day are, yeah.
I told my family they were recorded, so.
Is the police department placing those? Is that who it's in charge of? Maybe you want to pass along Mr. Alex's suggestion to them?
Other than that, I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.